There's meeting, we will begin as is customary with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for a pleasure to the slide.
I'm Julie Lewis, civil lawyer of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands. Foundation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There's now time for public comment. Any takers? Okay. Before we, well, we could do the minutes first, or if you'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes.
The motion approved the minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay. You have a motion and a second? Any additions, deletions, or corrections? If you're in all favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved. We do have an adjustment to the the agenda, and it's a lobbying certificate form for MH that we have to file. And so we're going to add that to the agenda, and I'll need a motion to make that adjustment.
So moved.
Second, it's the second that we amend the agenda to include the lobbying certificate form discussion. All in favor, excuse me, any discussion or questions about that? Came in late, that's why we're putting it in. No, no discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved. Jimmy, when did you want to consider that?
When I have my items, yeah, that'd be fun. Thank you.
Mrs. Newlin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have received some December the third and fourth of three million, one hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred eighty-six, eighty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. That brought us to a total cash of four million, twenty-five thousand, five hundred twenty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. Our expenditures were three million, one hundred eighty-two dollars, eighty-two thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. And the tax claim was sixteen thousand, six hundred forty dollars and five cents. That leaves us eight hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred ninety-nine dollars and eleven cents.
Motion? Look, a motion approved.
It's removed and second that we accept the President Newlin's report. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved. Thank you. Morning.
Stephanie, the Director of Human Resources. Under personnel transactions, under resignations and terminations. Matthew Sifry, part-time senior center manager, one, at angry agency on aging resignation effective January eighth, twenty twenty-five. Michelle Carey, caseworker supervisor, one, in children and youth resignation effective December twenty-seventh. Victoria Roberts, caseworker, one, children and youth resignation effective December sixth. Abigail Greenawalt, caseworker, two, children and youth resignation effective December sixth. Missy L. Lopez, full-time correctional officer at the jail resignation effective November twenty-eighth. Jody Mongreen, casual part-time operations tech for the coroner's office, resignation effective November twenty-fifth. Brandon Nunes, network technician and information technology services resignation effective December thirteenth. Samuel Wanger, program analyst and information technology services retirement effective November fifteenth. Cheryl Martin, part-time court clerk in the clerk of courts resignation effective December thirteenth. Nicole Johnson, full-time direct support aide in Renova termination effective November nineteenth. Sherry Baney, clerk type of stay in the sheriff's office resignation effective December thirteenth. And Stacy Hoyer, full-time deputy sheriff in the sheriff's office termination effective November twenty-eighth.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignations and terminations. And thanks Sam Wanger for a decade of service, as well as Sherry Baney for her longevity in the sheriff's office.
It's removed and seconded that we approve those personnel transactions. Any questions? If you're in all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Under changes of status transfers and promotion, Samya Santiago, promotion from caseworker, one, in children and youth effective two, at the rate of one thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents by weekly effective December eighth.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's removed and seconded that we approve those transactions. Any questions? If you're in all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Your other transactions, area agency on aging would like to hire Jay Jay Burkholder as a substitute meal transporter at the rate of twelve dollars and fourteen cents per hour effective December ninth. Children and youth would like to hire the following two caseworker ones, both at the rate of one thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixteen cents by weekly, both effective December ninth, and that is Danielle Mater and Ebony Brown. President Judge Tobak would like to hire Mackenzie, rehire Mackenzie Johnson as a DJ office support one at the rate of nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-four cents by weekly effective December.
Make a motion to approve the other transactions.
It's removed and seconded that we approve those. Any questions? If you're in all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Moving on to salary board, if there are no questions regarding the transactions presented, is there a motion to adopt those transactions under the salary board?
Second.
It's removed and seconded that we approve those salary board recommendations. Any questions? If you're in all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved. Thank you, Michelle. Good morning.
Good morning.
Sue, good morning. If you'd like to introduce yourself and your colleague, you may proceed.
Good morning. Sue Christner, Deputy Director of the Juvenile Unit at Prejudice Services. I'm joined here today by Dwight Penberth. He is our juvenile unit supervisor. So I'm presenting two items today. I'll begin with the Youth Advocate Program Community Treatment Center. Our community treatment center is a community-based option for youth to have intensive treatment without having to be removed from the home. This program has been crucial to the juvenile court as we have lost quite a few of our residential resources, and we've really tried to create a program locally where youth are getting the same level of treatment and interventions that they would have if they were removed from the home. So if safety permits, our community treatment center is our most intensive community service program that we have, and we also wrap that into our juvenile treatment court program. We have an existing MOU with our community treatment center that we would like to renew for the next year. The basis of that MOU is that we will maintain a minimum of four youth in that program, which has never been an issue for us. But if the population in the program would go below four, that we would actually pay a daily fee to keep the program operational despite the fact that we had a smaller number of youth in the program. As you guys may know, any youth who's receiving services in the community or residentially, those funds come out of our needs-based budget. But sometimes we come into situations where we need to hold a space, and if a child is not actively filling that space, we can't pay out of the needs-based budget. So we have, we've asked for an emergency fund of eight thousand dollars for this year. In the event that we do fall under that four-youth mark, again, that has never happened, and because it has never happened, we actually reduce the amount that we're asking for this year to, I think it's almost fifty, by almost fifty percent. So that eight thousand is just there as, as sort of a safety net for us, so we don't lose the service. We don't anticipate that being an issue.
Take a motion to approve the eight thousand dollar emergency fund as requested.
Second. Any further comment?
I would like, yeah, I think you left out an important comment. It's been very successful. Talked about its importance, but it's been very successful. I think it helped a lot of kids get back on track.
It has, and I can tell you that our placements have, over the last several years, been reduced by over fifty percent. So that's very encouraging, and it really has been a collaborative process between the court, the probation department, and our community-based providers really pulling together to make this work here lowfully. So we have something very unique and very exciting that we're able to offer.
There's a motion on the floor, anything else? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Okay, the second thing that we have is, if you'll recall, almost two years ago, I believe now, we had come before the commissioners and asked to purchase two contracted detention beds at Abraxas Academy. At that time, Abraxas Academy was able to offer us one bed, and we were hopeful that the second bed would materialize. It has not due to staffing issues at their facility. We were lucky enough to have one of our providers approach us and say, hey, we really like working with Lebanon County. We have the opportunity. We have a detention bed in a facility in Cambria County that we're willing to offer you because you didn't get this, this other bed two years ago. And of course, we were very ecstatic to hear that. So what we're asking today is that the second bed that had previously been approved for Abraxas Academy that did not materialize, that another bed has come open at another facility that we actually be able to contract that second bed at Manor Detention, which is in Cambria County. Cost-wise, about the same. And we do have the option, if we do not have a child to fill the bed, that we can offer that up to other counties. That has been quite successful. This state is in a detention shortage. So we have not had an issue with filling our one contracted bed. We do not anticipate that we will have any issues fill, filling a second contracted bed, either with our own youth or by helping out some of our partners across the country.
I got a motion approved.
Second, if I do have a question.
Yeah, let's start, question. Go ahead.
Is the Manor Detention the same as Adelphi Village?
It is owned by Adelphi Village.
Okay, because on my notes said Adelphi Village, and that's why I wondered why the difference to the name.
So they have several campuses on the west side of the state. So Adelphi's Detention Center is named Manor Detention. It, it just Manor is specific to the unit, but Adelphi Village is the one who operates.
It didn't make sense.
Yep.
And just for the sake of making the public aware, the cost per day, if you wouldn't mind sharing that.
The cost per day for detention is seven hundred forty-four dollars and seventy cents. That's pretty much standard across the state right now for, for DMs for detention beds.
I get that. It's just been a sticker shock for the Gerald, I mean, a couple of years ago was five hundred and something now. It's amazing. Anything else in comment or question regarding this motion?
I have a question about a separate thing, if you want to vote on this first.
Okay.
And I did want to ask Susan.
Sure. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Thank you. Just last month, in the middle of the month, Berks County announced that they are working to reopen their juvenile detention facility. The news reports indicated that it's, but it's only going to be for Berks, Doffin, and Lehigh. Is there any way we could get in on that? I just, you know, in case you would need additional juvenile bed space?
Hopefully, yes. So that detention center actually had sent, it sat vacant for quite a while. They are working on renovations to that facility, and they're going to open it in phases. So there were, those three counties that you talked about are going to be part of Phase One. They're also concerned, of course, everybody's dealing with staffing issues, so they have to get it staffed. They have to get it, the renovation's done so that it will pass all licensing. They will start with those counties. The hope is that eventually they'll be able to open up more of the facility with more staff, and then at that point, they will begin systematically determining if they can open those up to other counties, or if Berks County actually needs those beds internally. It's a wait-and-see right now, but we have been in communication with Berks County to let them know that, you know, we'd like to be considered down the road. They're forty minutes away. Right now, we have people driving hours across the state to get to detention.
That's why I wondered.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
What, anything for the, to elaborate on or amplify, or not? We appreciate your professionalism. I mean, you're very deep in this stuff, and we really appreciate your grasp of the experience trouble leading to hear some of the issues that you deal with, but we appreciate you doing that for the county.
Yeah, and thank you for your support.
You're welcome.
So I will walk through the 2025 proposed Lebanon County budget. Both recent slides that I've handed out, and I have a summary that I've attached also that I'll walk through and touch on here as I typically do, so. Start with the, the overall budget for 2025 is being introduced at one hundred four million, one hundred twenty-nine thousand, six hundred fifty-two dollars. That is at four point three nine two five mils, which is the same mileage as 2024. So there is no increase proposed for 2025. The general fund expenses, which are primarily what we focus on during the budget process, because those are the, those are the funds that come in through property taxes and other fees and things that the county in both, and so that is going up by seven point eight percent. And I will get to some of that in a couple of paragraphs here, and what largely is responsible for those increases in terms of technology and such, so. General fund revenue is seeing a slight increase of one million, one hundred seventy-four thousand, or one point nine five percent in the last several years. That's a, that's a higher number than we've been seeing. We, we saw a little bit of negative a couple of years ago. We've seen it hover right around one percent, but one point nine five percent, almost two percent, is, is a higher number than we've seen in the last several years. So that's a good, that's good news. Growth in the assessed value of properties is up one point one two percent. Again, that's been somewhere in the neighborhood of a half a percent to one percent, so one point one two is a number that it's good to see. However, it does not keep up with inflation. So these percentages that you see, one point nine five percent, one point one two, are not anywhere near what we've seen of inflation for the last couple of years. And in order to do so, mileage was adjusted for 2023 and for 2020, I'm sorry, for 2022 and 2024. Just because we, we just haven't been keeping up in terms of revenue inflation. In order to reach this balanced budget, we are proposing to use three million, nine thousand in cash carryover, which are set-asides for 2025 payrolls and health insurance benefits. Those are being included. That is something that, that we typically do. That those funds are available to carry us through the first through month, first few months before the tax revenue begins to flow in March and April, and we are able to count that toward revenue for 2025 and, and using that to make the budget balance by three million dollars. However, that can't continue year after year. That will reduce and eventually diminish over time, unless revenues would spike and we'd see an exceedingly high number, high amount of revenue sometime in the future. Otherwise, over time, that typically is depleted. We have seen significant cost increases, and this is largely responsible of what I'm about to talk about here. Pretty much will add up to the, to the three million dollars that, that we're facing here in a deficit and a need for cash carryover in replacements and upgrades to technology and the second of three years of security grades, security upgrades at the jail. The county's payroll, payables, finance, and HR software, which goes all the way back to nineteen ninety-nine, is being replaced. That alone for 2025 is one million, four hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. That is the biggest year for it because it's the implementation year. We intend to be ready to roll it out in January of 2026. It's a pretty compressed schedule. But if we, if we don't make that happen, or if we don't strive for that, then we will be forced to have to renew our, our IBM mainframe computer lease and maintenance, which we don't want to do. We're stepping away from that, and, and this is a, a big step in that direction, but an expensive one at that. And you'll recall, for those of you who may have attended the meetings, about a month ago, Danielle Hogg was in from ITS and proposed those contracts for the, both the software and the implementation. So that is one of, one big chunk. The other, the jail is undergoing a three-year phase replacement of access controls, so we're replacing all the controls that that activate the doors and the gates, as well as some surveillance in, in the system. We're replacing surveillance and backfilling surveillance. So there are places in the jail where we could utilize some more coverage, and we're going to do that. That's coming at a cost of about nine hundred thousand dollars for the second phase in 2025. And by mention, the county's contract with Crime Care Medical for comprehensive healthcare services is being renewed with a four percent increase. That contract is up to about, about three point six million dollars now. We started that in 2019. In addition to the usual healthcare contract for inmates, we are also implementing medication-assisted treatment in 2025. That's been discussed at prison board at length, and this is for treatment of opiate addictions and, and beginning medication-assisted treatment as soon as someone enters the facility, if they're addicted to opiates. We are utilizing some funds from the opioid settlement, but, but that doesn't cover all of it. So this is a brand-new initiative at the jail. Allegheny County has been forced to sue by the Department of Justice and forced to begin a medication-assisted treatment program, and it's on the horizon that pretty much every facility will either be, if you wait, you'll be forced by the Department of Justice, or you can get started on your own and, and basically be left alone by the Department of Justice as long as we're, our program meets the requirements. So that's something that's, that's going to be new at the jail. I just want to mention Sue Christner, when she was just here, talked about a reduction in the placements, the cost of placements when she was here. The, the cost, for the first time in a while, the, the general fund support to CYS has gone down for 2025. So we are seeing a result of the work they're doing in trying to reduce placements or find other placements for juveniles. That's not on the summary. It's just something I wanted to inject since she mentioned it. The county continues to contend with hiring challenges across several departments, recruitment and retention of our current valued employees. So in an effort to address that, commissioners have initiated a second salary study in four years. The last one was in 2021. This is aimed at analyzing and comparing existing and starting salaries with other counties, with the market, et cetera. We are, the cost of that, I believe, is ninety-five thousand dollars for 2025. We hope to have it completed in 2025. And for the budget for 2026, look at implementing, implementing any recommendations that that study may, may give us. In twenty, in the last eleven months, to give you some numbers and some examples of, of where we are and continue to be with, in terms of, of hiring and retention, we have hovered at an employed count of between six hundred and twenty and six hundred and thirty-five. It has not gone below that. It has not exceeded that. That's a very, to me, a very tight corridor of only fifteen, a movement of fifteen people over month, month over month. That tells us we are maintaining a steady number of employees overall, but with seven hundred and sixty positions at the county, we still have a lot of vacancy, and our rate, our vacancy rate currently is about eighteen percent. That's across our organization, but if you look closer at some operations like the jail specifically, their vacancy is thirty percent, and they have to do things operationally to account for that. There is a lot of mandatory overtime being required there and, and general overtime. So it's, they're having a tough time. It's across the state. It's across the industry. The warden has, is doing her best, along with HR, to, to come up with creative or new ways to try to hire. The warden just attended something last week, and I believe is going to work on a YouTube video for recruitment now to try to, you know, get out there and get in front of more, more people possible and, and use that as a, as an advertisement. So we're trying very hard, but it is, it's a difficult place to work. You have to be cut out for it, and it seems there are fewer and fewer people that are pursuing that type of thing, that they're managing as much as they can. Employee salary increases for 2025 are listed there. Court-appointed Professionals Union, three and a half percent. Court-related non-professionals, three and a half percent. Social Services Union, four percent. Detectives, four percent. Non-union, four percent. And the other two remaining, ASME at the jail and chocolate workers for the nine-one-ones, telecommunicators are both in negotiations, and contracts expire at the end of 2024, so we're still in the midst of those. Health insurance premiums are going up by eight point eight percent for 2025. That increase alone is nine hundred and five thousand dollars. We had a fortunate year last year where it only went up by two percent. That was unusual. Medical inflation alone is eight percent, so it's not surprising to see this number. But in terms of dollars, that's, that's a big increase. The actuarially determined contribution, or used to be the, the the ARC, it's now the ADC, not the ARC, but this is the contribution to the pension fund, is budgeted at three million, fifty thousand dollars to be paid from the general fund and the agency reimbursements from those funded by the state, and of course, keeping up with those payments, the pension fund's critical to maintain a funded pension for current future retirees. Last I recall, we are about eighty-four percent funded, which is a, which is a safe number, a safe place to be. Few counties are a hundred percent funded. Most are in the eighty, ninety percent range. Getting down into the sixties and seventies is, is a dangerous place.
But where we started.
That's where we started about ten years ago, yeah. And just to give some examples of some of the capital projects that are being funded through the budget, we're replacing some kitchen appliances, namely the ovens at the jails, lawn maintenance equipment. We have lawn mowers down there that are almost fifteen years old. Replacing and upgrading tasers in the sheriff department, replacing protective vests in the sheriff's department and in the detective unit. We are expanding the cooling capacity for the county's IT servers, the, where they are located. As we continue to add technology, of course, it creates heat. The room just gets too warm. That can lead to shutdown, and so we need to up, up the capacity there. We're also making repairs to the air conditioning cooling tower at the courthouse. That was installed right around two thousand, so it's time for some work to those, to that cooling tower. Continuation of the planned renovations of the former city offices and former DES offices downstairs, now that they have completely moved into their facility. We are still working on and awaiting asbestos abatement plan to see how much of that will be necessary in order to do the renovations, as well as some mechanical engineering plans for cabling, HVAC changes, et cetera. The development of a new county-wide comprehensive plan is in the budget for 2025 with the county matching a state grant of eighty-seven thousand dollars through general fund monies. And one more I'll mention is that the replacement of the audio system in this room is also.
It's amazing what.
So that is also in the budget. The slides are reflective of what I, pretty much what I went over. Um, the slides, uh, are reflective of what I, pretty much what I went over. Um, one other item on page two that I'll mention, liability insurance rates are expected to increase by twenty percent. We've been told by our carrier to, to build that kind of an increase in. Um, property and liability rates are just, continue to increase. It's a hard renewal market. Um, the carriers across the country, we belong to a pool of counties. In Pennsylvania, there are fifty-three counties in Pennsylvania that belong to the pool. That pool also belongs to national pools of counties. And across the country with, uh, so many natural disasters, they are really taking financial hits in losses uh, in counties and others, in other states, which affects our experience as well, or our rates anyway. Uh, and law enforcement liability is a big issue right now in this country, and there are lots of lawsuits and litigation over that, which end up in settlements, which in effect, not only us or, or our counties in Pennsylvania, but also across the country, again, affecting rates. So I just wanted to, um, to make mention of that. The rest are numbers, for the most part, I touched on, uh, the capital plans. Um, there's also part of the, the, the large expenses and technologies of refreshment, refreshing of the current I T infrastructure. Those are the core servers that the county runs on. They do have a lifespan. The software, uh, licensing expires, so a lot of that is being renewed, and that's coming at a cost of four hundred thousand dollars for twenty twenty-five. So going back to those, if you add those things up, if you add up the jail, uh, security upgrades, the software for payroll, um, finance, et cetera, and the upgrade to the infrastructure, it just about adds up to three million dollars, which is the difference in the budget. So, um, I, I could easily say absent that, we'd have a, you know, perfectly balanced budget without any carryover, but that never happens. We always have things that need to be, uh, addressed or replaced or upgraded and updated. So I think that's everything, unless you have questions. Commissioners, if you have any, obviously, if you have a comment.
I have some comments, but I would like to, to thank Jamie and Angel here for, for all their work, but all our partners had stay in, day out, uh, to, to manage these expenses, uh, that allow us to present a budget without a tax increase. It's a team effort. Thank you.
No, I'm fine.
I, I appreciate the, um, you know, the, uh, we'll say super, it's over, uh, having a budget without a tax increase. But I, the two main areas that I feel that we still have so much more to do, and, and it's all regarding, uh, employees. Jamie mentioned the vacancy rate in that corridor of, uh, fifteen people. But in order to keep that quarter, there's an awful lot of turnover. Uh, that turnover rate is also a very expensive part of, uh, this operation. H R is to be applauded for, you know, you see these sheets every, you know, all the replacement employees. Like today, we had one retirement. Again, it's, that's very typical. You know, you'll have twenty resignations and terminations in one retirement. And be, and that's a definitely a, a retention, uh, picture right there. Every two weeks we see that. Uh, so this salary study, though expensive, um, it's another investment in trying to get this right and trying to keep the people here. I know it's going to cost us another year and some more, you know, probably some more losses of people we didn't want to lose. But, uh, we have to, uh, keep with the market as best we can. So, uh, you know, while we appreciate not having a tax increase, we know that more investment needs to be made in this area. The other place where I think it's also regarding employees is the, uh, the contribution to the pension. You know, Jamie mentioned the, uh, uh, you know, that we've been doing this, uh, for ten years to get it up to where it is now, and, and that is a very important part of our financial stability picture. But, you know, investing in that has given our pensioners confidence that when they stay with us and retire, that there will be money there for, uh, for their pension obligation. When I started, I was told that that was a soft obligation, and I never really took it that way. Um, I felt that it was something that we really needed to, to invest in. And, uh, so anyway, we are in a, in a good place generally as a county. Appreciate all that work and, and we mentioned Angel from the controller's office, Jamie, and all the department heads that, you know, gave their time and effort into getting us to, to this moment. But, uh, we still have a lot of work to do in the, uh, the employee side, so.
I had something to, you, you mentioned the salary study. Uh, and I can't stress, uh, enough how important that is, that it's not a random number that we're picking out here. We have a, an issue that, that's a cost, yeah, that, that was, uh, that turnover rate is a cost to the county. Uh, there's a cost in recruiting and training and, and, uh, so it's in our best interest. And then to invest in that salary study is an important investment to make sure that we're providing the best value to our taxpayers.
Okay, anything else? Yes.
But do, does the county, I'm sure you do, but just for the sake of asking the question, when you have these exit, um, interviews with people that, that don't just abandon their job, um, what are they saying? I mean, I, I can't think of what else they would be wanting more than, uh, a better salary.
And that's primarily, they feel, in, just speaker from my review of those things, those exit interviews and so on. Primarily the benefits they appreciate, salary isn't keeping up. Uh, generally, you know, there, these are very unique positions, most of the, uh, departments. Those are, that's why it's so hard to recruit for, uh, you know, these, some of these places or departments. But the, uh, so they like the work that they've been called to do, but they, they know that, you know, surrounding counties are paying more. And that's the pool that we're, uh, we're competing against.
I can echo that and reading over them, that's the, the most common, uh, concern or complaint is that, you know, salary. So we know.
Two other things, if I, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Some are still finding remote work. You know, so they get a new job and they can work, work remotely. And of course, that's more enticing than what we can offer because most of what we do here is interaction. You know, with people, you, sheriff's office obviously can't work remotely, you know, so, um, so we do see some of that in the exit interviews and, and hearing what, you know, some people that are leaving, getting offers. Um, and secondly, and this, this continues to baffle me, but, uh, occasionally I see comments where, um, employees prefer a four oh one K over a pension, which is, pension's a defined benefit plan. It's a guarantee. Um, but it also takes seven percent off of gross salary to put into the pension. And there are employees who just want a hundred percent of their pay in their check and don't want that seven percent off. So they'd rather have a four oh one K where they can choose to maybe not participate or one or two percent instead. Maybe is, you know, at my age, that's baffling to me.
Well, but again, you know, the reality is if you make twenty-three thousand dollars a year and they take seven percent, I mean, it, it, it's just the reality. And when you look at the turnover rate, you'll say, most of those people ain't going to be here forty years to get, you know, so it, it.
Yeah.
To me, that's, you know, an archaic, uh, they should at least have the option.
Hmm.
Uh.
Did you say ain't?
Yes, I did. Yeah, that's how upset I am, Joel.
So.
No, I just didn't expect.
So what, I mean, again, not to, not to be nickel and diming everything, but what, what is a ninety-five thousand dollar salary study going to say? Except the people want to be paid more and you could pick up a phone or you could go onto the Dauphin County website and see what they're paying for a, a particular job and you'd, you'd have your answer.
Commissioners Coon, you know, Commissioner Coon's, uh, acknowledgement that it is expensive, but at least we can justify. We, and we know where those.
Based.
Yeah, we know where the exact, uh, market should be so that at least we, we can defend ourselves, uh, to, amongst ourselves to try to get a three oh vote to support, uh, if it needs a tax increase to do it. I mean, it gives us some data rather than just our intuition or.
In my experience, we use it in the healthcare industry and, and the school districts too, that, you know, how, what do we know? It's, it's not what I decide or what you decide, what a average teacher salary should be or, or a registered nurse. Uh, it's the market is going to dictate that, so. And the market is changing, you know, and we invested a lot just a few years ago, just before I came on board, uh, but it's changed a lot.
And to be, to be fair to the, you know, we, obviously we hire a consultant to do this, and some people say consultants just tell you what time it is with your own watch. But, but in this case, there's a lot of a deeper dive than just, just seeing what others are paying. We have access to that kind of data through the County Commissioners Association. They do a salary survey. They provide us the results of it. But it doesn't include anything like tenure. It just says, this is what this position is being paid in this county. It doesn't include tenure. It doesn't include comparable job descriptions, those sorts of things, which is something the salary study will delve into a little bit more. They also assist in recommending how to maintain it going forward. So is, is our, is our grade and step chart going to keep pace or should it be larger? Or, you know, if we have twenty grades in ours, for example, and the last time there was some recommendation that ought to be expanded to more grades so that you can spread more out and not have as much compression. So those are things to look at and recommend, you know, how you, for example, this four percent, for example, of, of, of non-union increase is two percent on the chart and one step for each, for the employee. So it's four percent, uh, total, but we're trying to keep the chart current too. And those are, that, that's kind of information they provide also. So it's not just simply a, yes, we could call around and get comparisons, and we, we do that sometimes. We do that on individual hires sometimes just to see, but it's a little more than that, I think.
I also believe that because we are a fourth class, third-class county, we're one fourth-class county. We're in transition and, uh, looking at a payroll study will give us a comparison. Uh, they look at what the different, and the, the more responsibility you have over other peoples, the bigger classes, uh, will get paid more. And so comparing us to Dauphin County, if they're a second-class county or third, isn't necessarily, we have to consider that, but we also have to consider other counties of like size. And so all that gets taken into consideration in this study.
Yes, true.
Jamie, how much money is left with ORPA? I know it has to be spent or committed by the end of this year, and is, did that play within the budget at all? If you're going to keep that money in-house and spend it on capital improvements, that thing is moving.
Um, I guess I've, my, my first response to you is that I plan to address more of that at the next commissioner meeting. Once we have, I'm still gathering a few more numbers, but, uh, but at this point, yes, I would see, and this is a decision of the commissioner, so I'm just speaking here before. But I, I would see a good portion of what is remaining to be committed to the, the renovations. Um, there are some other smaller requests that are still out there that I think they, they should consider, and I'll provide. That we've, we've, they, they've trickled in over time, um, but they, they need to be considered this month yet before the end of the year. Um, so that, I think we'll talk more about that in two weeks.
Around two million in the coffe.
Uh, it's, it's a little over two million at this point. Yeah, there was, there was, there's some interest there that, uh, and there's some, some funding that was unneeded for the towers since the tower project changed it, it, for nine-one-one. So, but I'll have a better number.
Hey, we, no shit. Bad.
Will the salary, salary study be considering then defined contribution? Does that sound like?
No, we're, that's by statute. Counties are, counties are, uh, must participate and have, and provide that, so that.
Defined benefit.
Yeah.
You're not allowed to ask for, um, or have that as an option. You must have defined, defined.
That has to be changed by the legislature.
And they, they actually have considered that, but it hasn't gotten enough momentum.
Okay. And then, uh, if you can dive deeper, just in the cash carryover, how much is in there?
Um, for, in the set-asides for twenty twenty-five, still with, with money left, or still with the month left over and, and the treasury, we use some for, um, for payrolls in December and health insurance and so on. I believe there's nine or ten million there.
And then, um, the county comprehensive plan, when will you be doing those meetings? And are you expecting to have that done by next, the end of next year, or is this something that's more long-term?
I can address that. Yeah, the, um, so Julie Chaney's heading that up in the planning department. She intends to, um, get a contract with Gannett Fleming, hopefully still this month. That's who we're pursuing to, to work with. We worked with them the last time. Uh, remarkably, the person that we worked with the last time we updated the plan is still working with Gannett Fleming. Uh, she was a, she's been promoted several times through the organization, but she's a resident of Lebanon County. We worked very well with her then and since then, so, um, they intend to engage with Gannett Fleming. Um, very soon, she plans to, uh, seek a, a committee, a task force of stakeholders in, in the early part of twenty twenty-five. And then I forget all the steps of the process, but basically the answer, the action has to complete it by the end of the year and begin implementation in twenty twenty-six. With, with, with lots of inputs, you know.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you can gather.
Yeah, I know, that's tough.
Um, but do you anticipate any major changes?
Can we, can we just, we, we have to vote on the budget. The, the comprehensive plan is, um, unknown as far as changes in the scope and scale. I think it's going to depend on the municipality's input and, and so on, but, um, that's yet to be determined.
Uh, can I just touch back on one thing, uh, since she brought up the, the carryover? I want to be, I want to be specific about that, that there's a difference between carryover and reserve. Um, we still have reserves. We have, we have, uh, unassigned funds that are there for rainy days, the typical term, you know, really.
So many days of operation.
Yeah, days of operation so that, for example, if the state budget, uh, is not passed on time and we end up, there was a time we ended up six or seven months without a state budget, and we have to basically live off of savings, and that's what that is. So we have about seven point eight million dollars in unassigned funds in reserve that we, we do not use. We will sometimes, uh, for example, I think in twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two, we will borrow from ourselves to carry us through the beginning of the year. But then, once tax revenues come in, we immediately replenish it. So it's, you know, it, it can ebb and flow in that way, but, but otherwise it is not something that's touched. I did read that Lancaster County is using reserves to balance their budget, but they, they have a pretty high, healthy amount of reserves. So I presume they know what they're doing and they can afford to do that for, for their budget for twenty twenty-five. But we're not touching reserves. We're using carryover, and there's a difference in between the two. Wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept the budget as?
I'll make that motion vote from the budget I presented.
And, and it'll go on display. Just want to make that part of the motion to be put on display for twenty days.
Second emotion, but once we've voted, we'll have a comment. I mean, once we approve it.
Okay, after we vote, okay. Um, we have a motion in the second to approve the budget as it stands and to put it on display for twenty days uh, to have final reading then. Uh, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Okay, split vote to the one.
Well, I commend our staff for working diligently on this budget. And the fact that we don't have a tax increase is obviously going to play well with the public. But in good conscience, I had raised issues in the past, uh, one being a fifty thousand dollar donation. When we have our mandated services come in and we're cutting them one or two thousand dollars in their budget, it doesn't seem right to give a non-mandated service fifty thousand dollars. In addition, um, to award a contract to a company million dollars, you know, and not bid it out, that's just not right. And so it's more principle on those kinds of things that I cannot vote for this budget.
I'm just going to respond to one part of that. I think it's very disingenuous for you to say, hey, we should bid that. You should have brought that up in August, September, before the budget process, so we would have a chance if, if we were interested in doing that. But to bring it up when we're going through the warden's budget on the day during the week of, of that, there is no way that you can uh, resolve that within the timeframe that we're working with to get to today. So, um, I appreciate your, um, good conscience, uh, thinking on this thing, but I, I, I really feel that your timing was, was flawed.
I think that, uh, that's disingenuous because why would you award any con- I think that that's disingenuous because why would you award any contract without bidding it out? Especially of that amount, it just doesn't make sense to me.
It was a contract that we were obligated, we had a three-year contract. Anyway, I just, that was kind of got my, got my attention. Anyway, anything else?
You're talking about the prime for contract?
I'm assuming, she said million dollar, but she meant.
And what is the fifty thousand dollar donation?
At Penn State, and I have two immediate family members who graduated from Penn State. I have nothing against Penn State, but I think we provide free office space, if that hasn't changed. And to do more than that, when they are supporting multiple counties, just seems excessive to me.
May I just address the word donation? It, it's county support of the Ag, Penn State Ag Extension Office, I think is what you're referring to. And when they came into their budget, they requested an increase. Yes, the county funds the, the cost of the space at the Ag Center for Penn State Extension as well as some support toward staffing it and, and administration, you know, other, other costs, those utilities, et cetera. And that was discussed at the hearing with the, with the extension people. And I believe, I believe every county in the, in the Commonwealth provides some level of support to extension. But I, some are more than others.
They clarified that, yeah.
But if, if that's what you're referring to, I just wanted to, just wanted to clarify donation. That it was, it's not a donation to Penn State University or something.
Okay, right. Way it was characterized, but again, we have agriculture as our number one industry in the county. We have a very vibrant forage and all the other surrounding agricultural. And we get so much science and the latest and greatest from Penn State all the time. I think the investment is, you know, about as good a return on an investment as you can get, and it's consistent over time. So I, I, I have no problem with, you know, supporting that, and I'll defend supporting that, but I, that's, of course, I supported the budget too.
I do appreciate all that Penn State does, but I think we were already giving what is customary by other counties.
Hey, Mike, anything else? We good?
I think it's not quite good. I'll, I'm out, I think.
It, we get to a value for it.
Absolutely.
All right, next.
Yes, and you took, you took your vote, so we're good.
We did, okay.
Next, I have two applications for hotel tax grant funds, one of which you tabled last week. The other is, is a new request. The one you tabled last week was for the Singing Cedar Chorus, for the Singing Cedar Chorus Annual Show at Church of the Good Shepherd. Believe this is for, yes, September twenty twenty-five. And the other is from Mancino's Pizza and Catering at the Lebanon Valley Mall. They are requesting funding for the Yule Bazaar at the Lebanon Valley Mall. They, they attached a, a narrative of what that consists of. So I would put those before you for consideration. The unencumbered balance in the hotel tax grant fund is thirty-two thousand nine hundred seven dollars.
Okay, is there a motion on either of these two?
Oh, sorry, I didn't make mentions of the amounts, I'm sorry. The, the Singing Cedar Chorus is requesting twenty-five hundred dollars of a total project cost of thirty-five hundred. Mancino's is requesting twenty-five hundred of a total cost of six thousand.
Based on the number of people they project to bring in, I propose to approve this request for twenty-five hundred for the Singing Cedar Chorus.
Sir, second.
Well, question first, you didn't want to do them both at the same time?
I'll retract that motion and then, and agree to that we should approve both, let the amounts present.
We moved in second, that we approved those two requests. Move discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Okay, next I have exemption requests for disabled veterans who meet the criteria for property tax exemption through the Department of Military Affairs. This would be John Kreiser of Horseshoe Drive Anvil, Heather Kerr of To Be Care of Ginger Court Lebanon, Marion Fisher, Tunnel Hill Road Lebanon, Lisa Roller, Sunrise Drive Lebanon, Russell Walters, Meadowfield Drive Anvil, Sean Edwards, Bridle Avenue, Palmyra, and Thomas Forky of Sweet Briar Lane Lebanon.
Make a motion to approve the seventh request for real estate tax exemption for disabled veterans.
It's removed in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Two actions to request on, for the Lebanon County Health Facilities Authority. First, the reappointment for another term to, for Daniel Keller and Barry Ansel. And then the appointment of Larry Bowman. They're, they're passing on the recommendation to appoint Larry Bowman to fill a vacancy that came as a result of resignation of Christopher Gethard. So if you would take those in separate motions, the reappointment of Keller and Ansel, and then the appointment of Bowman, if you so inclined.
I'll move to take, recommend the action of Dan Keller and Barry Ansel be reappointed for additional terms.
Second.
It's removed in second, then we approve those reappointments, any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved. Your motion on Mr.
I'll make a motion also to appoint Mr. Bowman to fill that vacancy.
Second.
It's removed in second, any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Next, I have two agreements for the provision of conflict criminal, conflict counsel criminal attorney services. This is essentially renewal of these two agreements. However, the, the, the amounts are being adjusted, they're being reduced a bit because of less need in the public defender's office for these criminal conflicts attorneys. So, and, and I want to say thanks to Stephen Zarles in court, court administration office for putting this together and, and negotiating with the, with the law offices for these contracts. I will mention that the solicitor has reviewed these and given his approval to it, to be presented to you. The first being with Busken Davis Law Offices to provide four criminal appointments per month at one thousand dollars flat fee per month. In addition, if time is, and if time is spent in trial, it would be four hundred dollars per half-day and compensation for jury selection of two hundred fifty dollars additional. So that would be the, the first agreement. And the second is with Jacobson, Julius and Harshberger Law Offices, who would accept seven criminal appointments for the same terms. And again, these are, these are reductions, and we saw that in, at budget time in that line item, so.
Just a good sign.
Good sign, yeah. I want to ask for your approval on this contract.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Solicitor, have you had the chance?
Yep.
Moved in second, any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved.
I have two proclamations to present for you for recognition of two individuals. One is for Michael Santora, otherwise known as Mickey Santora. And this is, I think, recognition for the annual Anvil Palmyra Golf Tournament at Fairview, the annual cash dinner raising money for funds for Lebanon County exceeding seventy-nine thousand dollars, seventy-five thousand dollars per year for thirty-nine years.
Yes.
And he is retiring as a member of the Anvil Palmyra Sartoma Club, and they want to recognize him.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
We moved in second, that we approved that motion, any questions?
There's a comment, I, it's hard to imagine anybody in our county who has dedicated more of his time and energy to so many good causes that Mickey Santora deserves, well deserved.
Yes, indeed. We failed, we failed to mention in this proclamation his tenure at W O B R, but that, that also is another big piece of Lebanon history, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say he has been a shining star in Lebanon County for a long time, certainly deserves recognition.
All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same signs, so moved.
And the second one is to recognize the work of John Henry Gertis. And the Lebanon Valley Expo intends to name a, the center's North Hall as a tribute to his vision and drive. John is being recognized for the economic and social benefits that the facility had, has had on Lebanon County. And I think they're doing, doing a rotation of the naming of the halls. And so they want to name it after John for twenty twenty-five, and this proclamation would recognize that.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve that, if you are. I knew Mr. Gertis, not very well, he had children my age, but remember him fondly. Man, he was close friends with my father.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved.
And lastly, the item you added to the agenda at the very beginning. This is a lobbying certification form to be submitted to Department of Human Services, Office of Mental Health, Department of Abuse Services. And simply is certifying that the funds being provided by DHS for mental health department will not be used in any way toward lobbying. The very common certification we just missed a couple of weeks ago.
I make a motion to approve signing of the requested federal form.
Second. We moved in second, that we follow the law. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved. Okay, thank you for your attendance and your input, we stand adjourned.